Thank you. I am going to call this September 26 Public Hearing on Land Development Code Text Amendments to Order. Before I get started, I do have three memos to read into the record. The first is from Chairman Les Miller, made out to Vice Chair Pat Kemp, and it reads, "Vice Chairman Kemp, please be advised that due to a previously scheduled appointment, I will not be able to attend the September 26, 2019 Land Development Code Public Hearing. Please read the reason for my absence into the record." Second memo is to me, from Vice Chair Kemp, that reads, "Commissioner White, please be advised that due to a death in my family," I'm so sorry to hear that, I had no idea, "I am unable to attend the September 26, 2019 Land Development Code Public Hearing. Please read the reason for my absence into the record." The final memo is coming in from Commissioner Ken Hagan, and it reads, "Please be advised that due to a family obligation, I will be unable to attend tonight's meeting. Please read the reason for my absence into the record. Thank you." So I will pass this along to clerk staff to file. The purpose of this evening's public hearing is to hold a first public hearing on five Land Development Code proposals and to entertain board discussion on those. The board will not be taking a final action on any of those this evening. So with that being said, I'll hand it over to staff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Joe Moreta, Development Services Department, for the record. We've prepared a brief PowerPoint to provide some framework that we can load up now. Here we go. Commissioners, as you said, this is a first public hearing tonight. There will be no vote, so we're essentially here to seek input from the board and also input from the public, and then take direction or guidance as necessary based on that input. We also have another public hearing, as I said before. That public hearing will be Thursday night, October 24, and that will also start at 6:00 PM. Preceding that public hearing and subsequent to this public hearing, there'll be a consistency finding before the Planning Commission itself, so when we come back, October 24, in your backup, it'll also be the findings of the Planning Commission as well. Having said that, we do have five amendments tonight, and the first one is LDC 19-1043. Has to do with phosphate mining regulations, and Mr. Mike Stevenson will make a brief presentation on this matter.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mike Stevenson. I'm with the Utilities Department, and briefly, there's three sections in the code that we're just tidying up, pretty much. We're Section 80208. We're clarifying and documenting the certification-reclamation release processing. Section 80209, we're revising the filing and contents requirements for the annual reports. And Section 80210 is revising the calculation of financial responsibility payable to the board. And I'm available for questions, or I can go further in depth, if you'd like.
I see no questions of staff at this time. So this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone from the public that wishes to address item A1, which is LDC Proposed Amendment 19-1043? Anyone wish to speak from the public? Okay? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I see no board discussion, so staff, looks like we're ready for A2.
Thank you. This is LDC 19-1053, excuse me. It's a revision to the Land Development Code, Part 611.00 and 120100, dealing with brew pubs and microbreweries. Commissioners, as of right now, our Land Development Code does not have a definition for brew pub and microbreweries. It also doesn't have any standards in the code that speak to microbreweries, and as you know, that's been an emerging industry that we're proposing regulations for that would allow our code to recognize them and also create some solutions for some of the folks in that industry. What it will do is actually prepare our code to allow for microbreweries to actually brew, sell, and distribute. The way that will be broken down is in the districts which are CG, general commercial, and CI and above, that will dictate where the actual distribution can occur. Those are the districts where distribution is allowed. However, in the CN, it will allow for the brewing and the sale of growlers. Growlers are not what I grew up with, but they're what the industry has now and they're what the industry needs that apparently is tied to a CMB permit. Right now, the way the licenses are configured, you can have a microbrewery, but in those districts, you can only sell on the premises. So what this is doing is allowing us to configure our code to allow somebody to brew, have on-premises sales, and also sell to the public those things that are called growlers. So having said that, it would be allowed in neighborhood commercial districts, general commercial districts, CI, and manufacturing. One thing else additionally I would add is that the way the license in our code is configured now is that when somebody comes in with what's called a CMB license from the state, that's an open-ended type of license that doesn't restrict the amount of brewing. So the way our code's configured, the only place that that license could allow for brewing, the sales and distribution, would be in a manufacturing district, and then on top of that, it would have to have a taproom to operate for the on-premises sales. So this fixes all those solutions, or this provides solutions for all those fixes. And it also, I need to mention that it limits the districts to only allow 15,000 barrels a year. So that's will be the metric that we look to in terms of saying how intense the brewery could be, and we look to that also to be the metric of compatibility in terms of where it will fit. There's also a metric tied to the actual floor space. Fifty percent of floor space has to be dedicated to the brewing function, so we believe the way it's organized right now that will provide adequate measures of compatibility. We are open for input and guidance as necessary, but we have had some meetings with people in the industry, and so we've sought their input. As far as we know, right now, this provides all the solutions, but you never know. It's a public hearing, you might find out different tonight, so we'll see. But as far as we know, we've provided the adequate solution.
Excellent. Well, that certainly has been an emerging industry, and, you know, by grew up with, I know you meant from your 21st birthday to present.
Yes, the growlers, when I was, a growler used to be a dog.
Yeah, yeah.
That would bite you, but now it's totally something different.
That's right. That's right. Well, thank you for that staff presentation. I will now open the public hearing for item A2, which is LDC Proposed Amendment 19-1053. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak to that item? Welcome. Just state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Commissioners, my name is Mark Bentley, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa, 33602. I want to express my appreciation to Joe and his staff for working through this process with a lot of technicalities, and I think they've come up with some really viable solutions. I just primarily wanted to get a clarification. Joe had mentioned you, in terms of the manufacturing component of the business, that you had to have 50%. I think what you meant was you can't have up to 50%.
No more than 50%.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all, that's my only concern.
I appreciate that clarification as well.
Yeah, okay. Hey, thank you very much. Take care.
Okay. Do we have anyone else from the public? Yes, sir. Come on up. You'll just state your name for the record. You'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Matt McDonough, 5418 Winhawk Way, Lutz. I am, my wife and I are starting a micro winery, and I know that wineries are not included in this code, and that's why I'm here today to talk a little bit about what wineries do and how we're very similar to breweries. To start with, we support all of the changes that we're seeing in this proposal. We understand the reasons to limit things, to create some accountability for reporting, and they make sense for these types of properties, which we're actually in a lease on one of these properties and are hoping that this will work well for us. The new amendment's very progressive. It'll bring us on par with places like Dunedin and St. Pete and all those places that are known as hubs for this industry. But as I noted, as it's written today, it doesn't include the AMW license, and that's for wine, that's for mead, which is what we're producing, honey wine, and for cider as well. And we think this is an unintended exclusion. We hope it is, and we would hope that it would be modified to include an AMW license that falls within these restrictions. Our processes are similar to beer. In fact, they're a little less intrusive, if you will. We don't use any heat to produce our wine. We don't have any grain waste, so the storage of waste is not an issue. So environmentally, it's a little bit less of an impact. And from a tax perspective, which I like to talk about, it creates a lot more taxable revenue. A $24 pack of beer will produce about 35 cents an ounce in taxable revenue. Our mead would produce about $2.50 of taxable revenue per ounce. And we do that in the same footprint or smaller than your average brewery. So, and if you're not familiar with what mead is, we have one right up the road that's very successful, but it's become kind of the hot thing now. There were 30 meteries in 2003, and now there are over 400 as of 2018, and it's growing at about 130% per year. It's becoming a destination-type place, much like craft beer was back in the early 2009, 2010. So to be able to do this, obviously, in this type of space, we would request that an AMW license be added, or that there be a clause that microwineries, such as what we're trying to do, would be treated the same as microbreweries, because for all intents and purposes, we operate the same way. I think it would be a win-win if we're able to do that, and there are actually already businesses in the county that are zoned CG that have an AMW license. So it wouldn't be that drastic of a change. We'd just like to see it called out specifically so that it would accommodate folks like us and whomever might come after us. So that's all I have to say. It's been a pleasure speaking in front of you and working with the county so far, and we look forward to a prosperous relationship.
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to ask you to stay at the podium for just a moment. Do you have, staff, do you have any issues with recognizing the license that he's speaking of in the Land Development Code, or somehow including wine manufacturer?
I don't think that we have an issue, per se. We can see if this is something that can be accommodated within this amendment in this round. We need to make sure that what we fit in fits within a notice that we provided, but we will, we don't, conceptually, we don't have a problem or objection to what he's asking.
And I do see a couple Commissioners in the queue, and I'm going to get to you guys, but I'd like to seek consensus this evening as to whether or not we're supportive of including this wine manufacturer in the LDC. I certainly am, and would like to see that come back for the second reading, the second public hearing, but, you know, I want to listen to my colleagues as well. But thank you, sir. We've heard you, and we're going to see what we can do to maybe get this incorporated.
Thank you much. Very appreciated.
Into the LDC. Thank you. The public hearing is still open. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak to this proposed LDC amendment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioner Overman, you're first in the queue. You're recognized.
Well, living in a brewery-rich environment, in the Heights, where there are a lot of breweries, and I know exactly what a growler is, and I own about four of them, I can appreciate what it brings to an economy and to a community, and so I'm pleased to see that we can get the regs on our land code, working for those businesses and those business owners that are interested in taking advantage of this opportunity. Question I have, in addition to addressing the AMW issue, is that, if that's the code, is, which I'm interested in seeing, pursuing, to see if there's some simplicity that we can add to an industry that is growing, that is microbusinesses that grow and add value to our community, so I'm very much interested in that. But my question is, is this code changes consistent with what I believe the city has, City of Tampa, has already adopted for the microbreweries or that are inside the city limits? Is there some consistency there, or is there any discrepancies that we need to be aware of?
Our staff looked at the city and other jurisdictions, so we could say it's similar, but I wouldn't say it's exactly consistent with theirs.
What are the primary differences? Because as a business owner that might have multiple locations, anytime there's inconsistencies, there can be errors that businesses can, you know, run amok, and I prefer to avoid that kind of inconsistency or inefficiencies.
We can provide the comparison and the backup for the public hearing and send that to you even in advance of that, so you can.
Are there material differences?
If the board, if the board agrees, I'll allow this gentleman a moment to speak to that.
Hi, Mark Bentley, once again.
Hey, Mark.
The city defines microbrewery, and what they do is they, the only regulation they have is limiting, well, obviously, certain zoning districts have to be commercial or industrial, but the only limitation is they can manufacture 60,000 barrels annually versus what the county's proposing is 15,000. Now, the National Brewers Association defines a microbrewery as 15,000 or less, which is pretty consistent with City of Clearwater, Pinellas County, City of St. Petersburg. They're all at 15,000, so, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That answers my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Merman, you're recognized. Thanks, Mark.
Actually, all the comments, everything's been answered. Commissioner Overman's question was right on point. We just need to make sure we're being consistent with the city, especially at this. But I'm very much, I actually went to a destination micro winery in Indiana this year, this summer, and it was really interesting. So I think, I see the benefit of it. I know we have, is it Curling?
Keel and Curling.
Keel and Curling.
They're probably operating, obviously, they're operating under some different regulations, but.
They have a planned development zoning.
Oh, they do?
Yes, they do.
Okay. But anyway, I see the big benefits, especially economic development and all that, from that. So I don't know. Do you need a motion to have them include?
I think I'm, I think I'm just, yeah, I'm just looking for consensus, and I see consensus to ask staff to incorporate the microwinery concept into this for the second public hearing.
Just want to make sure, process-wise, we're right. Thank you.
We will certainly do that, and if there's a notice challenge, we'll identify that and identify a solution for it that can be acted on in short, short term.
Sure. So for the gentleman that spoke to the microwinery issue, we're missing three Commissioners tonight, but this is, this is going to come back for the second public hearing with the microwinery issue woven into it, so I would strongly encourage you to take a look at that once it's published, and if you can, participate in that second public hearing as well. Okay, so that takes care of A2. So staff, we'll move to item A3.
Next item is LDC 19-1054, revising Land Development Code 611 dot 121, and also providing a change to the definition. It deals with car washes. The thrust of the amendment will be to clarify the code and correct it. The code right now has a self-service car wash. It has an automated car wash, and it has a staffed car wash in the definition, and the distinction of that is, is that only the self-service car wash is allowed in the neighborhood commercial district, which is the lightest commercial district that we have. For all practical purposes, there's not any difference between self-service and automated car wash. The definition that we've prepared, and really, the way they operate and the way we would view them, is that if it's, if it's an automated car wash, all you do is put money in it, everything's automatic, there isn't any staff. So if there isn't any staff, it's self-service, it's automated, so we're combining those two terms and making it clear that that type of car wash is allowed in neighborhood commercial. So it's fully automated, has no staff. The threshold will be when the car wash provides staff, whether that be to take money and assist with cleaning windows or tires or whatever it is. At that point, when there's a staff being brought in to work as part of the car wash, that's where that distinction is made. They would go into the general commercial districts and the, above that, in terms of commercial. So we're making that clarification to our code. The code was amended several years ago, and somehow, that was introduced into the code and didn't get quite placed in there to make it clear, but now self-service, automated, all the same. That's our recommendation.
Very good. This is a public hearing on item A3, LDC Proposal 19-1054. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to that item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Just a quick question. So staff for assisting customers with washing the car is not the same as staff that just cleans up the property, keeps it neat, makes sure the coin machines are working, so that's a.
Correct.
So they could still have staff that keeps the property.
Property maintenance staff would not be.
In order, washing cars and cleaning windows.
Correct. If they're out there washing, if they're helping them dry the car off, put, you know, whatever it is, they put on tires to make them shiny and things like that, then that's, but if they're cutting the grass and just doing maintenance functions on the equipment itself or the facility itself, then that's not what this is speaking to.
Okay, great. That's what I want to clarify, because I know that there are some that have, you know, one person to kind of make sure everything is working, you know, but not really assisting, and so I wanted to make sure there wasn't a conflict there. So thank you.
Very good. That takes us to item A4.
Item A4 is LDC 19-1055. It's a revision to the Land Development Code, Parts 20200 and 611 dot 02, primarily dealing with accessory dwellings. It's a straightforward amendment that recognizes legal non-conforming lots and conforming lots that are 7,000 square foot and larger, to allow accessory dwellings to be permissible. The regulations still contain all the other metrics that speak to accessory dwellings, like the 900 square foot max, and then to go beyond that, it has to be a certain percentage of the primary structure. If it's a non-conforming lot, they would still have to conform to the zoning setbacks. It would just make that use within that district, and that property owner, it would avail that property owner the same use permissibility that everybody else in that district has, if they have a lot that's 7,000 square foot or larger. So that's the thrust of it. It just recognizes legal non-conforming lots, and the reason it's being done essentially is because if a homeowner right now has a legal non-conforming lot, and they have a district that would otherwise allow an accessory dwelling, so say they have a half-acre lot, say they have a 10,000 square foot acre lot, and their lot is slightly less than what the district requires, it could be slightly less, if it's a legal non-conforming lot, then they would have to get a variance. In some cases, they've had to rezone to try to get accessory dwellings done. For example, RSC 9 districts permit a 5,000 square foot lot size. If that homeowner and that lot owner has a 10,000 square foot lot, since they're in RSC 9, to get an accessory dwelling, they would have to rezone to do that. So we were trying to create some, a reduction in regulatory impediments to make those permissive in districts where they sustain the lot size, and have a legal lot.
Very good.
That's our recommendation.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. This is a public hearing on item A4, Proposed LDC Amendment 19-1055, and I see at least one member of the public that would like to speak. Just state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. As a point of clarification, I emailed earlier to find out what time we would have available, and I understand it's three minutes. I was told differently. There's another member wishing to speak. I don't think I'll need more than a total of six.
Is that other speaker willing to yield their time to you?
Yes.
Okay. Let's give Mr. Butts six minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joshua Butts, and I live in the unincorporated Hillsborough County in the rural service area. Mister Chairman, I would like to read a few small excerpts from the Land Development Code, if I may. I believe if we juxtapose our discussion of the proposed change in 191055 against the backdrop of our existing code, we can examine the concerns and challenges I will address tonight. I'm hopeful that in doing so, this board will facilitate a final product that addresses the growing needs of our county while simultaneously upholding and respecting the values and property rights of all of our citizens. In the first section of the code is Part 10203, labeled intent. It says in part, "In order to foster and preserve health, public health, safety, comfort, and welfare, and to aid in the harmonious, orderly, and progressive development of Hillsborough County, it is the intent of this code to be equitable in terms of consistency with established regulations and procedures, respect for rights of property owners, and consideration of the interests of the citizens of Hillsborough County." The intent section sets the table for all subsequent code language and is really the heart of our code. Specifically relating to 191055 regarding accessory dwellings on non-conforming lots is the Nonconformity Section 110301, which says in part, "It is further the intent of the Land Development Code that nonconformities," a lot in this case, "shall not be enlarged upon, expanded, intensified, or extended, nor be used as grounds for adding other structure or uses otherwise prohibited by the code except as provided herein." Further, and very importantly, Section B says, "All rights and obligations associated with nonconformities, as defined herein, shall run with the land and are not personal to the ownership or tenant of the land, and are not affected by a change in ownership or tenancy." Now that we have a platform established, let's discuss in detail the concerns that surround this code change. First, it appears the code change is county-wide and not limited to this urban service area. Will the unintended consequence of this change create sprawl in the rural service area? How can we craft this change so as to protect neighborhoods and families that move to parts of our county where there is lower density, larger setbacks, yards, and more open space? Second, the intent section of the proposal states, "The reason for the change is that, quote, 'In many instances, lots that meet the minimum lot size requirement and zoning development standards but are zoned RSC 9 are not allowed accessory dwellings.'" It goes on. "Furthermore, legal nonconforming lots which otherwise meet all the accessory dwelling standards are required to file variances. Can we craft this code change so that the intent of the statements matches the language of the code?" What I mean by that is, if our problem is that we cannot place accessory structures on lots only because they are legally nonconforming and meet all other code requirements as the intent statement claims, should we not craft the change to support this assertion? This is an important distinction that is at the core of my concerns for families around Hillsborough County and for the protection of their property rights. In this photo I'm going to show you is an accessory dwelling that was built on a nonconforming lot because it was granted a variance to do so. However, it did not meet all the Land Development Code standards, specifically the required setbacks.
Mr. Butts, can we stop the timer for a moment?
Yeah.
Is the board okay with seeing the photo on the Elmo? Yeah. You want to go to the microphone on the Elmo and put that up? I've not seen the photo.
And I have copies for staff.
Actually, I have. You emailed that to us.
This one, I don't think I have.
Yeah. I have seen the photo, but that's fine. Let's leave it up on the Elmo.
Okay.
Okay, we can restart the clock, Mr. Butts. Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
No problem. I will avoid the backstory, but simply put, this structure encroaches into the required setback by 80%. The side yard setbacks in ASC 1 are 15 feet. This was granted three-foot setbacks. The front yard setback was reduced 70%, it was given a 15-foot setback when the required was 50. Is there a way to craft this code change to follow the intent whereby it allows accessory dwellings on lots that truly meet all the standards except for the fact that it's nonconforming? There is currently a requirement in the code that accessory dwellings must be owner-occupied, and further says this requirement cannot be varied. In fact, there are a total of three positions, provisions already existing in the accessory dwelling section, that the language says these requirements cannot be varied. An option could be to add the same language to E of 61102 accessory dwelling standards. It says, "Accesory dwelling must meet principal setbacks and shall contribute to lot building coverage. Total building coverage on the lot shall not exceed district standards." If we add language here that says these requirements shall not be varied, protections would be added for our citizens. An unintended consequence of the current proposals, anyone with a nonconforming lot of at least 7,000 feet could turn around and ask for variances to setbacks, whether front, side, or rear, and those setbacks exist for the protection of the families that choose to live and raise their families here in Hillsborough County. These setbacks are one of, if not the, primary tool to support the intent statement I read at my opening. The code so says. But what if someone, for some reason, cannot meet the setbacks? The code already allows accessory dwelling units to a but or physically attached to the primary home, so there would be an option of attaching the AD, the accessory dwelling, instead of separating it with a separate structure, thus avoiding more variances. In summary, I applaud both staff and the board for its willingness to tackle the affordable housing problem. I believe that by adding a statement in some form, like that all requirements must be met and the requirement shall not be varied, to the current proposal would follow the intent of the code that asks we respect the values and property rights of our citizens and further the progressive need for housing that is more affordable to our citizens. I greatly appreciate your time and listening to me. I know it was a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing's still open. Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak to this item? Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move into board discussion. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Butts, if you could come back to, I just want to ask you a couple of questions. Is this, this particular case is in the courts right now? Is that correct?
Which particular case?
Well...
The one I'm showing?
The one, which is...
I'm just showing a graphic. I mean, I do actually have a case.
You have a case?
Personally, yes.
Okay. Pending, and that, can you tell us what that involves and how it relates to this item?
It's simply a matter of circumstance that I happen to be involved in a case, and I'm kind of the kind of guy that likes to do a lot of research on stuff. So I could probably tell you as much or more about accessory dwellings than the gentleman here. I've invested a lot of money in my property, and I don't want anything from my government except to be respected and treated fairly. That's all I want. I don't want a cookie at the end of the day. I don't want anything special. And I think most citizens, I mean, how many people do we have in Hillsborough County? And look how we're changing our Land Development Code, and we have almost no one here. I mean, I've got to stand up for what I believe in, and so I believe, this isn't something, it's not a vindictive thing. I didn't know my neighbors before they got there. I don't have anything against them. In fact, it's been probably the worst experience I've ever had to deal with. The people that moved into my property, and I mean, forgive me, cut me off if you don't want me to talk about it, but, I mean, this is something that I want to prevent other people from having to go through. It's horrible. I've spent thousands of dollars. For what? I mean, I, it's, I was raised in America. We were taught to believe we're a rule of law. Where did that go? I don't understand. So, I mean, you know, there's a way we can do this. There's a way we can work on this. My father-in-law built the first single-family affordable housing homes in 1974 in Palm River. It's, I've been a real estate broker for 15 years. This is something we have to do. I agree. But let's do it fairly so that citizens in Keystone or citizens in Apollo Beach or wherever they are feel like that they have a say in what they do with their property. There is no reason, if they want to put accessory dwellings, I'm not against it. The only thing I'm trying to do before is to say, these were the rules. I'm just asking that, hey, would you please enforce them? So that's a little backstory on it, but...
Okay, so your neighbor, their accessory dwelling, they're actually using for their business, commercial purposes?
I, I can't, I can't say 100% because it's actually not 100% completed. And I, I don't know that I really want to go down that road in this forum, and I really actually wanted to kind of stay away from it. I have nothing against any staff members. I have nothing personally against anybody. I just want to have the respect of my government to enforce its laws and my protection of my property.
Yeah, the point I wanted to bring up by asking you that question is, and I'll just say to Commissioners, I mean, accessory dwellings mean dwelling. Somebody is residing in there. And I remember, you know, in the legislature, we actually did the mother-in-law legislation, we called it that, so that they could live at the back of your house and, you know, make it affordable for them as they're aging and in place. And I think what I'd hate to see is the unintended consequence is that accessory dwellings are kind of used for someone to bring their business onto the property. And as you all know, that changes the makeup of, you know, a neighborhood and a subdivision or whatever it is. And though I see the benefit of that, and I did call staff and I talked to them quite a bit about this, number one, I think we should continue the item until the court case is resolved. That's what I think. And I think staff is kind of more or less agreed with me on that point today because it's really hard to move forward with that. But I think also is, what can we do to assure us that there aren't unintended consequences from doing a change to the Land Development Code like this? And I'm, of course, all for affordable housing and all that, and putting two houses on one piece of property is really good, but I think we've just got to make sure that we respect the integrity of the neighborhood, of the homeowners, in doing so. And so my final thoughts are really, I would just like to see this continued. If staff recommends it, I would definitely support it.
I'd like to see if staff is supportive of that and how that would look procedurally when it comes back for the second public hearing.
So if the, it's the will of the board, we could remove this from this round of amendments and allow the case that's pending to play itself out and reintroduce this amendment in the next round of Land Development Code amendments. That way, there would be, we would be sure that whatever we're doing in the code does not affect whatever other proceedings are, that the pending litigation. And we can certainly also meet with Mr. Butts during that time to understand some of his particular concerns.
We have a, we have a longstanding tradition of being deferential to the single-member district commissioner on issues like this. So I'm certainly going to be supporting Commissioner Merman's suggestion, but I do see that Commissioners Smith and Overman are in the queue, so I'd like to hear their thoughts. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I think it's a great idea to, to continue that along with staff's recommendation as the case plays out. I agree with Commissioner Merman completely that this is a really good idea. It's a good path we need to go forward on to try to remove any unnecessary impediments to accessory dwellings. And at the same time, you know, I understand Mr. Butts' concerns and issues that he has there, and I was thinking of a really minor tweak that might be kind of a win-win, and so a continuance would allow us to work a little bit more on this as we move forward and bring back something that everybody's happy with.
Great. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
I was actually going to say something similar to that. No, I, we clearly need to be able to offer accessory dwellings, you know, when, when it does work for not only the homeowner and the community. In this particular illustration, I would hardly call that accessory because it looks like it's the same size as the house. So, you know, if it requires 14 different variances to make it fit on the lot, obviously there's something wrong with the plan. So, I mean, the spirit of the idea of accessory dwellings, to your point, Commissioner Merman, it's an accessory dwelling, not another house. So I think it's important for us to take, figure out a way to word this in a way that we address the spirit of the concept of an accessory dwelling so that we do accommodate families that might need to care for a loved one, whether that be a senior or a disabled child. You know, that, or even have a small dwelling there as an income source for another family member that needs, you know, support. But I think it's critically important that we recognize the spirit of the definition, accessory dwelling, in whatever ruling we put, whether it's conforming or nonconforming. I think, you know, when it requires that many variances to setbacks and other things, there's clearly a problem that needs to be addressed. And so that, I'm truly of the belief, let's just keep it simple. And when it takes 14 different changes to modify it, clearly there's something wrong with the process. So I look forward to seeing some new solutions come with this, this being continued. So I would support that.
Very good. So let's go ahead and just put this on a different cycle based upon board consensus.
We will remove this from this round and bring it back, addressing the comments you've heard and the board's comments.
Very good. Thanks for coming out, Mr. Butts. Okay, that takes us to item A5, which is Proposed LDC Amendment 19-1218.
Excuse me, Commissioners. LDC 19-1218 is the next amendment. This is an amendment that was requested by the board. I believe Commissioner Smith specifically brought this item up to the board's attention. Purpose of it is to modify a density provision in the recreational vehicle park regulations, Section 6.11.110.C1. That provision allows a density bump up if they meet certain locational requirements. And what this does is allows that density bump up in the context of those location, locational requirements when they also include urban services. And what it says is, if the urban service, if it's not the urban service area, or if it's outside the urban service area and utilities are not present, then the bump up cannot be considered. So in any context that is being considered, there has to be urban services or utilities present.
And in the urban service area.
And in the urban service area. Now, wherever it's at, it has to have utilities. That's the easiest way to say it.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation. This is a public hearing on item A5, Proposed LDC Amendment 19-1218. Anyone wishing to speak to the item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to have this moving forward. Now, we've had a couple of items come before us in zoning hearings with, with this, where this applied, and the change is very minor. It's just a change to one footnote of the item so that it only applies within the urban service area or, and, and when services, urban services are available. And I, I'm just going to point out that we've had 11 notice, DEP notices of sewage spills just this year from these kinds of packaged plants that, that go along with this. So if they, if they don't have urban services, if they have urban services and they're in the urban service area, then it's not an issue. So the issue is the sewage spills and, and the increased density outside the urban service area. So this little tweak would take care of that.
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Smith, thank you for your leadership on this issue and diving right into this and seeking to have the LDC amended to address it, and it looks like you're, you're well on your way to getting the LDC amended, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further board discussion on this item, is there anything else from staff?
That concludes our agenda, sir. Thank you.
Okay, very good. This meeting's adjourned.